All right, let's call the December meeting of the Kingston Springs Board of Commissioners to order. There's a little bit of a change here on the thing. First thing we need to do is actually move on to item three, which is swearing in of the new commissioner. So Jennifer, if you could please administer the oath.
All right. I want to come up here.
Can all of us stand or do we go down?
Do I want to go down or do it up here?
You can do it right here.
You gotta do there. You gotta be in front of the group.
Oh, let's go down here.
Okay, we'll go down there.
Right. John, you're camera.
Yeah.
Yeah, see?
You gotta practice rounds with Bob.
I did.
Yes.
I did.
See?
Well, have you been in my case today?
Thank you.
Someone raise your right hand for me. Aye, I will state your name.
Aye, Tony Gross.
And then repeat after me. Solemnly swear or affirm.
Solemnly swear or affirm.
I will support the Constitution.
I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And the Constitution of the State of Tennessee.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And will obey the laws of the United States.
And the State of Tennessee.
And the State of Tennessee.
That I will in all respects.
That I will in all respects.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
Observe the provisions of the Charter.
And ordinances of the town of Kingston Springs.
And ordinances of the town of Kingston Springs.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Discharge the duties of the city commissioner.
Discharge the duties of the city commissioner.
The office I'm about to assume.
The office I'm about to assume.
Without fear or favor.
Without fear or favor.
Into the best of my skill and ability.
Into the best of my skill and abilities.
Nice. Congratulations. One big job on the seat. Sign for me. I've got things to do.
I'm gonna light mine up before I sign.
Does that make it more official?
It does. Actually, I guess that would make more sense.
I'm gonna show Jeff the secret handshake.
All right, Debbie, could you please call roll? Oh, pledge, sorry.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, these are the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
All right, John, I guess. Who's calling the roll? Doesn't Debbie? Okay.
Corley.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Glenn.
Here.
Stoller.
Here.
All right, now I'm going to turn the meeting over to the city manager so that she can hold the election for the mayor.
Okay, I'm gonna ask in the floor for nominations for the mayor.
Nominate Tony Gross.
Second.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I make a motion that nominations cease. In a second.
In a second.
My fairly because I write these at the same time. Okay, so then I'm gonna call for a show of hands for all of those that are in favor of Tony Gross as mayor. And at this time, I'll try to go with Gross's name.
All right, the next item is to have a... Or to open the floor for nominations for vice mayor.
I nominate Bob Stoller for vice mayor.
What, second? Do we have any other nominations?
I'll nominate Glenn Rimmick.
All right, wait, we need a... Do we... I'm sorry, do we have a first... A second on...
A second on Bob?
Do we have a second on that?
A second Bob.
Okay. All right, and then do we have any further nominations?
Do we need seconds on nominations? I don't know.
I think probably to be on the safe side, we'd probably do.
Okay, we'll throw one in there, okay.
And then we have another motion on the floor.
And we have another motion on the floor for Glenn Rimmick, so we need a sec... Is there a second for that? I'll second that too, I guess.
Okay.
Does that say? All right, all in favor of Bob Stoller for mayor or vice mayor? Glenn Rimmick? Okay, so that's it, right? Are we done there? Or did it... Okay, I did that right.
Very good.
Okay, now we've had... The minutes have been circulated and everybody's had a chance to look over them. Do we have... Oh, actually, yeah. Yeah, we're... Okay. Minutes have been circulated, we've all had a chance to look over them. Do we have any additions or changes that need to be made? We have a motion to pass the minutes from the November 17 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. The agenda has been circulated, we have two additions to add. We have item F, which is we have more secondary meter reading from the water department to approve. And we have item G, which is the approval of the contract for the community... To use community development partners to administer our multimodal grant. So those are only two items there. Do we have a motion to pass the agenda as amended?
Motion to pass the agenda as amended?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, on to announcements from commissioners. Do you have anything? We start with you, Jeff. No? Glenn? Gary?
I'm good.
Bob?
I'm good.
All right. Merry Christmas, and I'd also like to welcome that we have our former reporter friend here, who's gonna share something with us a little bit later, so thanks for being here. All right, community input and concerns. If you have anything that you'd like to say to the commission, just come to the podium and state your name and address and speak. Oh.
Want to go now?
Yes.
Yeah, you can go now. I thought maybe Pam wanted to say something.
Later was now. When you said later, you meant now.
First of all, I just need you guys to be on the words. And I know your mother's a very... But anyway. And I can't explain it, but I said it before, you guys are forever a part of this wherever I go. You know, that's how... No, I'm just kidding. But the reason I came here is it's the holiday. It's the time when I get the most sentimental... I'm usually pretty sentimental most of the time. More mental than... It's also a time when I give thanks for the people that do great things, who make things better for other people, who make things better for community, and that's what you guys have made me so thankful for. So since I think some of you know I write poetry which has no purpose in life, but you mentioned to people that they need to be permitted, and I have permitted, but unfortunately they would like to see me. So anyway, I'm gonna share, if it's okay, I'm gonna share a poem and then a quick song. Is that all right?
It's the holiday meeting, so yes.
Okay. I should have brought something through by my... But the poem came about, it shares a tradition in my family. My dad was from... Grew up in Appalachia, in the whole land and country. And one of the traditions in his family at Christmas was honored in this piece I wrote. It's something that we would do periodically, but it wasn't always carried out. And I brought my cheek in, unless in case my stability kicked in or I freaked out looking at you guys and had to look away. So anyway, if you see me look away, I'm either scared or forgetful. Okay. "Come on, let's go before it snows," my mom and dad would say. Then we'd hobble down the road in our four-wheel-driven sleigh, searching for a stretch of woods where we would stop and pray. Then we'd pick up fallen branches for our holiday at this point. Mom and my brother favored cedar. They liked its wintry scent. My sister loved the pine trees and the pricks their needles fed. My dad liked bare oak branches. I liked the way the wood was bent. Variety spruced up and spiced our home with cinnamon. And we'd piece it all together every Christmas night, cover it with tinsel and one twinkle star of light. Then we'd give thanks for all we found from what was lost as our branches formed a Christmas cross. There was no jolly Santa with his reindeer on the run, not a row of stockings stuffed with treats for everyone. But not a tree with presents gathered at its base, branches as a symbol of God's race, His Son, His love, His presence gathered, shining from above. My mom and dad taught us lots of honest ways, simple things. And every time I think of all they gave, what joy it brings to pass peace and strength to those I love and their souls still stay with the promise of God's gift, and Christmas really means. And I piece it all together every Christmas night, cover it with tinsel and one twinkle star so bright. Then I give thanks for everything I've found from such great loss as new branches for the Christmas cross. So that's bad. Now I better do something so disturbing. I rarely share this. This is where I can run out very quickly if it goes bad. Anyway, it's a song I wrote 16 years ago for my brother and sister when we lost our mother and had to work to encourage them. And it also resonates with a sense of a lot of things that I've seen in my 10 years of covering this glory since children come. We had a lot of people in this county that believed in what they bring to the table, what they have to offer. Doesn't make much of a difference, doesn't matter. They need to understand just the fact that you stand up and you reach out and you do something basically to your parents, you never know who you're touching in a little tiny thing that you have to give. I liken it to what's considered people that are smiling. It's like, you have everything you have. If you're doing that, you are making a difference. And again, it goes back to the huge difference that all of us make. And I said it before, I saw something which is profoundly drew me away and will never leave when I saw it came together here. It's one of the most beautiful things I've seen in my life. It was such a privilege to see. Adds plus the privilege of sharing your stories from this country. Anyway, this song, and I hope I hit it with those... Well, I'll hit them. I don't know what it's gonna sound like. I'm not gonna hit something anyway. But it's actually got a tree theme that I didn't realize. That song is called "Go Out On A limb." Go out... What's the... Go out on a limb. Reach for the sky. Now you just might fall. Or take off and fly. But you'll never know. Bummer till you give it a try. So step up from within and go out on a limb. Throw open your heart. Give it a shake. And you might connect, or your heart might break. But you'll never know if that love can escape. So throw open your heart and go out on a limb. Turn these pressures in the life you live to the pleasures you are called to give. And there's a treasure that you will receive. It is the measure of all you believe. So don't ever give up. Never lose sight. 'Cause deep down in your soul, you have dreams burning bright. But nobody will know if you run from its light. So don't ever give up. Throw open your heart and go out on a limb. Reach for the sky. Now you'll probably fall again and again till you learn to fly. Now it's time to begin. So step up from within. Set your dreams to the wind. And go out on a limb. Thank you for putting up with that. I have to go out and try to speak before I go to Target. I worked 65 hours there last week.
Oh, wow.
My longest day has been 16 hours. But on that day, I was blessed by a visit from Rory, the somebody, Joey and Rory. And I hadn't seen Rory in a long time. And back when Joey and Rory were doing a project, they wanted me to write their liner, so I checked it out. But... And Joey and I had the same birthday, September 29th. But it was an amazing thing. All of a sudden, he recognized me and stepped out and had a half-hour conversation. But I will take us on the interesting, on Target. Because the only job I've ever had was somebody I worked with thanks for what I dreamt. And it makes a huge difference. But what you guys brought me in my 10 years at the actual city of the day has had a propulsive effect on helping me understand what it means to be a citizen. The value of what one person can bring is best. Thank you.
Thanks again, Randy. Just for future reference, Randy, you don't ever have to ask the commission to come visit us, you know? You're always welcome, so...
I'll put by and then complain.
All right, on to department updates. Are there any additions to... I mean, we've all seen the reports. Is there anything that the departments would like to add or comments? Nothing? Nothing on the...
Cars and not to know, or is it that...
That time of year? Good advice. Always remember to do that. Remember, I guess, all of the year, but especially this time, so... Any legal updates?
I need to have a attorney-client meeting.
We do. So we've kind of come to the conclusion there are options, and this is... We can leave this partially up to them. We can... We can all go in there, or they can all go in there, so...
We need to clear the room.
But we don't want anyone to have to go out and call, so...
Is there a long room over there?
What?
Is that a little room?
Yeah, we could go in there.
Can we not do it at the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So the option you have, either you could go or hang out in there.
All right, we have no unfinished business, and you're out of jail now, so... No unfinished business. Onto new business. Item 15A is a reappointment of Mike Patnott and Lee Ann Ferguson to the planning commission. That's an appointment by the mayor. And I called them both, and they were both eager to continue to serve on the planning commission, so that was...
Thank you.
That was good.
Thank you.
So they are back. Item 15B is a contribution to the GoFundMe campaign to help city workers in East Tennessee whose homes were destroyed in the wildfires. So this is separate from... This is specifically for the city employees.
In the package, we got an email from Tina M. of the pool. And they're just asking cities to contribute for, you know, like the mayor and the city reporter and I don't know who else out there lost their homes. So they're hitting local governments asking for...
I believe Dolly Parton's got this covered.
Nine million, something.
She said nine million, but it's 500 million worth of damage.
Wow.
Well, it might be some goodwill in case we ever find ourselves with our houses destroyed, maybe though.
So true, so true.
We don't have a dollar pardon. We don't have no dollar pardon here.
Yeah, we don't even have a dollar pardon, so...
Anything, we're not really close.
Well, would anyone like to make a... Suggest a dollar amount to contribute to this, or do we not want to? I think it might be a worthy enough thing to make a small contribution of some sort, so...
You think it's 500?
It's 500, too.
I make a motion, we donate $500 to the pool.
All right, we have a motion in a second.
Was it earmarked for the...
Earmarked for.
Those the city...
The GoFundMe.
For city employees. Okay, Will first and then Jeff second. Do we have any comments, questions, discussion? No? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Coordinates 16-010 amending the town's municipal code title eight and chapter four for wine in a retail food store. And Deborah, you can go through this briefly. I know that this is something we needed to get out of the way quickly, so...
Yes, we need to definitely get this out of the way quickly. As y'all were, you know, had the referendum which passed to add the sale of wine in retail food stores. We didn't have anything in our books about the sale of wine in retail food stores. And we talked about this a little bit last month, but a retail food store, which I think is... When you use retail food store, I think you think of a grocery store, but also can be a convenience store, as long as they sell 20% comes from some kind of food item. And so they are now allowed, under state statute, to sell wine. The city's role in this is that we are required to do a certificate of compliance by the city. And in that certificate, all that we are saying is that the person has not been convicted of a felony for 10 years and that the property is properly zoned for the use. And that's all our certificate of compliance does. And then it goes to the ABC for approval. And that's really our only involvement. We lose total control after that. It's up to the ABC. But we are required to do the certificate of compliance, and this just kind of sets out the procedure. And then we've gone in application, and we've got a first person that's already turned in. And we have 60 days by state law to either approve that or deny that.
Just to clarify, he's not turned in the application yet.
He has not.
No, he's expressed interest.
Okay, very good. That buys us a little bit of time, because we need to get this through to your reading.
60 days from the application from him.
From he... Right, from it being turned in. And...
So we're not on the clock, that means?
That means we're not on the clock yet. I was afraid he was gonna turn it in before we even had the first reading. The state statute is a little bit different in that it gives the total authority to the mayor to sign off on that certificate. Typically, it seems the way that y'all have done things is that you've done that with the approval of the board. And that's kind of the way that I wrote it up in here. But legally, the mayor can do it without the approval of the board. It's a lot... Which is weird, because it doesn't go along with the way a mayor...
Well, I mean, I guess with the different city government systems, I mean, if Debbie was the mayor, you know...
Right, but you think of the city manager, it just gets the mayor. So I kind of went within compliance on how y'all do a lot of things, it's just... So, but I left it with the mayor with approval of the board of commissioners.
No time for this.
So that's 103, 8-103?
Yes.
So all we need is a certificate of compliance from the city. He goes to the state, and the state requires, what's it called? The vendor.
I don't know if they have to do...
Responsible vendor.
I don't know that, because that deals with beer. Responsible vendor act is beer.
Really?
And it's not... It doesn't fall under the liquor store, because it's separate from that. So, for instance, if you have whatever Bubba's Fuel Stop, and they sell 20% be... 20% food, then the beer would come to us. We would do the certificate of compliance for wine, and then that's our only involvement on the wine. So we don't have any right to regulate the wine. If that makes sense.
So... Pretty straightforward.
Yeah, it sounds like it.
If we don't do it, they'll do it for us, you know, so...
Yes, if we don't make action in 60 days.
What I don't understand is why Mike is so... You know, he was talking about this a year ago.
He was chomping at the...
And then why he hasn't gone ahead.
It's expensive with the ABC? Maybe it's more than he thought it was.
I don't know.
Two things. He was looking for a January 1 start date.
Okay.
Explained to him that he would need two readings from the commission to pass, and we're amending the town's charter, which was kind of a big deal. So that put him off a little bit. I've not given him the application yet, because I didn't want the clock to start yet until at least we've gotten through this first reading.
Okay.
Well, that makes sense.
If you went ahead and... Because we would do the second one in January.
So I'll get back in touch with him this week, first of next week, and get him an application, so the clock will start, and that should give us plenty of time.
Clock starts tonight?
All right.
No.
Oh, when he does the application?
When he does the application, 60 days.
That's kind of wild.
And then the state superceded us if we don't do it. So...
That's right. Do we have a motion to pass, the ordinance 16-010?
Motion to pass.
Second.
All right, is there any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. The next one, of course, is... 244 Hickory Drive code violation. Well, we know where we are.
Can I just put that on the agenda? Because Jennifer said you all would need to come back and make a motion to do... You all could do. You couldn't make that motion during that.
Oh, for the ordinance?
Yeah.
Oh, put it on the agenda for it, okay. Do we have a motion to put it on the agenda for January? Is that what we need to do then?
No, motion to set covenants and restrictions and to accept.
Set that, yeah, yeah, yeah. All right, well, we, we know what the covenants and restrictions and the fee are. Do we have a motion along those lines? We spent a pretty good deal of time talking about.
Motion to set covenants and restrictions and to accept, and to accept a twenty-five hundred dollar fee from two forty-four Hickory Drive for code violations.
Second that motion. We've got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All right, hearing, hearing no discussion, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion passes. All right, then the final item is set a date for the commissioner's retreat. Think that we've sort of semi circulated amongst ourselves, possibly February eighteenth. Or that weekend, what was that, is that?
Seventeenth is Friday.
Seventeenth and eighteenth.
I'm fine. I just, I have to go back to Texas with my husband on the twenty-first, so.
Is that okay then with the?
So you're looking at February the eighteenth?
We're not gonna have, I don't think we want one for four days.
You all want to just sit in one day? Do you all want to go, I mean, tell us, John and I both are, this is our first time, so do you all want to do the Friday thing?
I think, you know, I think there's some value to the.
I think to get us out early on Saturday.
I like it.
So do Friday and Saturday?
It's a good.
Yeah.
They have good chicken.
It's bonding. It's a bonding deal. We don't play golf.
It's important to do, so.
It's a Friday, you.
We can switch the par. All right. Well, so we, we're good there. So you can get that all taken care of and set up.
Do we have surplus?
Make sure there's actually hotel rooms for that weekend and all that good stuff.
M and M's with peanuts.
M and M's with peanuts, yes. Lots of good snacks. Randy's already gone.
Good snacks.
Is that all that, John?
No, you don't have to worry about chicken here. We think of the chicken.
Take up the chicken taken care of. All right, surplus item. We don't have any surplus items, do we?
No surplus items.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we're on secondary meters. Item has secondary meters. We've got some more secondary meters. Do we have a motion to approve these?
It's a twenty-five dollars, it's already on chance.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, motion passes. And then we finally got the approval of the contract for community development partners in relationship to the multimodal grant of their administration of that.
Very nice.
Were they surveying that, can I speak? I saw someone surveying.
No, that was somebody else.
L Hardin surveying that.
That was somebody else.
Okay.
Yeah. Do we have a motion to, to approve the signing of the contract with, with community development part, yeah, community development partners?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, motion passes. We have no surplus items. Do we have any other items for discussion?
I have one thing for you all. That, Mr. Yoho, the one that came that wanted you all to do the sidewalks, you know?
Yes.
He came in today and wanted to know if he was on the agenda. And I told him you were on last month. And he, he said, well, that's not how I understood it. I, I understood that the boards was going to check about the easements, and then I was supposed to be here tonight, and you all would let us know how to proceed. And I said, I didn't understand it that way. So John didn't understand it that way. So I guess I need to know if I put him on the agenda in January. I think he's coming and expecting you all to be able to give him an answer, and I don't know what's involved with getting easements.
I don't either.
I guess I need, because I don't really know what he's talking about, figure out that, but I mean, we, you have to condemn it.
The engineer.
Yeah, you're gonna have to have it surveyed, and then you're gonna have to, the owners are gonna have to either A, agree to it, or we're gonna have to condemn it, which would take a while.
I think it's his property, isn't it?
No, 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 no.
He doesn't want it?
Right away, and then they left about property from about four houses down through there.
See, it's gonna come and put a.
Well, they donated.
Virginia Harris's, you know, you're gonna have to get easements from those people, and I don't know.
I would think the only way to start would be to, to take a survey, have a meeting. That's what we did before on the sidewalk.
Do you all, you know, he's saying Mr. Merble's going to pay the cost to do sidewalks. Are you all going to bear the cost of surveying and?
He needs an escrow. He needs to pay forth.
You know.
He said he wants to cover it, that he needs to pay forth what, we need to figure out what those costs are.
I think we could have a meeting of the people, that's properties, and see what they want to do first.
Okay. I mean, I'm just looking for direction, because I think he's coming with the anticipation that you all are gonna have this handled for him in January.
No way, no way.
He seems to be.
Right, I mean, that's the way we did that before. We had a meeting of the people that's properties that, that, that has something to do with. You know, if they're gonna donate a little piece of their property, if they're not, how much are they gonna, they, you need to get them all together and let them decide what they want to do.
Is the, the four properties that we're talking about, it's not part of the other subdivision that Ron Merble did, it's separate property, right?
This would be to connect to Ron Merble's subdivision.
Okay.
Starting there, come to this corner, right?
We come from this corner all the way to his thing, so that there's, yeah.
Well, there's, what's his name on the corner? Bateman. And then there's Virginia Harris on Stu Houses.
Yeah.
And then there's another house.
A brick house.
Yeah, I think, I think that's it. And I don't know what any of it's the, the property of Daryl here.
There's four houses.
It's gonna, it's gonna have to do with some culverts and a lot of other things. I mean, it's not just going in and lay a sidewalk in there. It's not, it's more to it than, because there's a big ditch there, you know, and.
And his, if you were continuing his sidewalk, it's, it's pretty far from the road. I think it encroaches upon that house pretty aggressively. That first house he's coming up on, that's just right on their front porch practically. So that sidewalk would actually have to go a little closer to the road.
I just need direction from you all. I mean, do you want us to get together and plan a meeting for the property owners? I don't know what's the first step.
I think maybe the first step would be to assess what it would cost with, if, if the property owners were to approve it, what would it cost for the surveyors and have, basically see if he intends to pay forth ahead to even go forth with this.
I, I think one is, who's, who's the guy that's gonna pay? Merble. So I think you need to meet with Merble.
So do you need to talk to Mr. Merble and find out?
That's what I think.
You know, are you planning for the surveying or, you know?
I just think we should know what that survey costs.
Well, I don't, I don't think. I think the survey we need to take is one right here in a meeting, and let the people, if they're interested in going forward with it, and then we could have a meeting with him.
If they don't want to, then it's, the whole project is irrelevant. You're right, Gary.
Unless you condemn it and take it.
I mean, they, they may not, yeah, I don't know.
The way that they want to do that.
I'm not ready to do that yet myself, but I can't vote yet.
I'm pro sidewalk. I think it helps.
Well, no, I mean, I, I can see their point. It'd be nice to have that be walkable to town, because it's, without, on being on a busy road, but.
So do you want us to plan a meeting with those property owners that would be affected with you?
I think that would be a good first step.
Or do you want John?
And if they don't come?
How do y'all want us to do this?
Why don't you guys meet with them and just have a conversation with those property owners?
There's not that many. I mean, it wouldn't be.
Wouldn't be that tough.
And I think the first thing that would be intimidating is just look at what he has existing and think that that's gonna continue on. I think the object should be, needs to be close to the road and not encroach right on their front door, as it seems to be. I think that might be, it's a little threatening.
I don't know if there's.
There are codes on sidewalks, yeah. I would think, right?
Call you and ask him. So we got some ideas. Okay, so John and I'll meet with him and come back in January, let you all know their feel, and I'll just call Mr. Yoho and tell him it's just not gonna happen in January.
Perfect. They can't pour concrete in January anyway.
I won't.
So. Unless you mix it yourself, huh, Gary?
I'll tell you if it. Starting that, I would say it probably be a year before we'd ever get started on it. Time you get all that done. If you have one person fighting it, then, then that could get into.
Fact, and we all can do it.
Say not do it, you know? Play it on all. Well, you know, it gets to the point what it's worse, you know, taking somebody's property like that. And they could take it in court too, like Richard did us. Uh, over, right away.
Shepherd's Court.
Well, do you, do you have reasonable direction now, I guess, as to how to proceed?
John and I'll just meet with the property owners.
Just meet with the property owners, get some more information.
Tell him that we will.
And you also have to think about how many people that's gonna serve. Right now, it's about three, maybe four.
And the owners.
Four houses.
Yeah, the homeowners themselves and the people who live out there, so that's eight. But we're not paying for it.
Yeah, you're right.
Step one. Step one.
All right.
Meet with homeowners.
It is eight twenty-one. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Second.
All in favor? Aye, motion passes. Let's adjourn.